Good evening. This, the forty-ninth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight invocation will be provided by our Father Bruce Lewandowski of Sacred Heart of Jesus.
In many Christian churches, the gospel proclaimed yesterday was from Luke chapter four, verse fourteen to twenty-one. "He came to Nazareth where he had grown up and went according to his custom into the synagogue on the Sabbath day. He stood up to read and was handed a scroll of the prophet Isaiah. He unrolled the scroll and found the passage where it was written, 'The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he has anointed me to bring glad tidings to the poor. He has sent me to proclaim liberty to captives and recovery of sight to the blind and to let the oppressed go free, to proclaim a year acceptable, a year of favor, the year of the Lord.'" Rolling up the scroll, he handed it back to the attendant and sat down, and the eyes of all in the synagogue looked intently upon him. He said to them today, "Today this scripture is fulfilled in your hearing." In abundance, Lord God, anoint us with your Spirit. Let this be Baltimore City's year of favor. Lord, bring good news to the poor. Proclaim liberty to those who are captive, in fear, in anxiety. Bring recovery of sight to those who are blind to the needs of their brothers and sisters, and free those who are pressed by fatigue and shame and failure. Yes, Lord, proclaim a year of favor for Baltimore City. Let all that happens here today be for the good of the people of Baltimore and for God's glory. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Okay, thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation will be provided by Marlo Palmer Dixon and Sandra Colia on behalf of the Citizens Review Board for Children.
Good evening and thank you for having us here. I'm Sandy Colia. Citizens Review Board for Children, CRBC, is a federally mandated program that was established by the Maryland State Legislature as the Foster Care Review Board for Children in nineteen seventy-eight to provide oversight, advocacy, and improvement in child welfare. CRBC is comprised of volunteers who serve across the state in each county and Baltimore City on local review boards to review cases of children in out-of-home placement to ensure permanency, well-being, and safety of children in Maryland's foster care system. Approximately four thousand children live in out-of-home placement in Maryland. CRBC strives to review twenty percent of these cases, providing not only individual case advocacy, but important data used to show improvement areas for the local Departments of Social Services as well as supporting legislative advocacy. A typical review day consists of a social worker presenting the case, including the circumstances that brought the child into care, and testimony presented by interested parties in the case. Interested parties include biological parents, foster care parents, therapists, caseworkers, and even the children themselves. Once the case is presented, CRBC volunteers, who are trained in child welfare issues and pertinent legislation, discuss the recommendations regarding the permanency plan and the care the child is receiving. The CRBC child welfare specialists then submits this written recommendation to the courts, and currently about ninety-eight percent of our recommendations are accepted by the courts. In addition, the CRBC state board consists of volunteers from each of the local circuits. The state board reviews and coordinates the activities of the local review boards, examines policy issues, procedures, legislation, resources, and barriers relating to out-of-home placement and the permanency of children. When asked why she volunteers, one of our volunteers shared that she immediately thought of the starfish story. The story tells the tale of a young boy who frantically tries to save starfish stranded on a beach by throwing them back into the sea, one by one. A skeptic tells the young boy he's wasting his time, and he cannot make a difference to the thousands of starfish on the beach. The young boy picks up one starfish, throws it into the water, and says, "It made a difference to that one." Currently, there are a hundred and forty-eight volunteers serving with CRBC, providing countless hours to advocate for Maryland's most vulnerable children, and one by one, our volunteers seek to help Maryland's children find their way home. Thank you.
I'm Marlo Palmer Dixon, and I just wanted to let you know if you want more information about Citizens Review Board for Children, you can contact our agency at four one oh two three eight thirteen twenty. We are on Facebook, Instagram, and the Department of Human Services website. Thank you.
And thank both of you, and thank you for the great work that you do on behalf of our children. Thank you. Okay. It is the Council Custom Generalized Infication Act for motion general, prayer, motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Costello. All those favor generalizing the invocation say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the January fourteenth City Council Meeting is on council members' desks.
The motion approved the journal. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Journal is adopted. Executive nomination withdrawn.
EA eighteen dash zero two zero zero Nina Davis, member Baltimore City Youth Commission, District Seven.
Executive nominations.
EA nineteen dash zero two two nine Frank Bonaventure Junior, alternate member of Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District Five.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two three zero Anissa Jai Bonner, alternate member of Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District Eleven.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two three one Melissa Martinez, member of Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District Fourteen.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two three two Mashala Middleton, member of Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District Four.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two three three Ariel Taylor, Commissioner, Baltimore City Youth Commission, District Four.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two three four Ayana Thomas, Commissioner, Baltimore City Youth Commission, District Six.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two three five Ayana Williams, Commissioner, Baltimore City Youth Commission, District Thirteen.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two three six David C. Ryer, Director, Baltimore City Department of Planning, District Three.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two three seven Joan Carter Conway, trustee, employees, and elected officials, Retirement System Board of Trustees, District Fourteen.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three two four Dockless Vehicles Regulation and Taxation. For the purpose of establishing the dockless vehicle program requiring permits for dockless vehicle-for-hire providers, imposing certain data-sharing requirements upon dockless vehicle-for-hire providers, providing for the revocation of dockless vehicle-for-hire provider permits under certain circumstances, establishing certain standards of operation, dividing certain terms, imposing certain penalties, allowing for the seizure of a dockless vehicle under certain circumstances, correcting and clarifying, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions governing bike lanes, imposing an excise tax on dockless vehicle-for-hire providers, generally relating to the regulation of dockless vehicles and providing for a special effective date, sponsors City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three two five City Streets Closing Air Rights Area Over a Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of the Forty-One Hundred Block of Hillen Road. For the purpose of condemning and closing the air rights area over a portion of the public right-of-way for, public right-of-way of the forty-one hundred block of Hillen Road as shown on plat three four seven dash A dash seventy-six A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date, sponsors City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three two six Sale of Property Air Rights Area Over a Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of the Forty-One Hundred Block of Hillen Road. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in the air rights area over a portion of the public right-of-way of the forty-one hundred block of Hillen Road and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date, sponsors City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three two seven Zoning Conditioned Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district variances twenty-three twenty-three North Calvert Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on a property known as twenty-three twenty-three North Calvert Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain block regulations and certain off-street parking regulations, sponsors Stokes.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three two eight Urban Renewal Hamilton Business Area Amendment. For the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Hamilton Business Area to modify the list of prohibited uses in the community business, district waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date, sponsors Dorsey.
You want to talk about that? Okay. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three two non-repeal of Hamilton Business Area Urban Renewal Plan. For the purpose of repealing ordinance seventy-nine dash twelve oh seven as amended by ordinances ninety-five dash five six four and oh eight dash ninety-one, which established the Hamilton Business Area Urban Renewal Plan and providing for a special effective date, sponsors Dorsey.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey. You're going to speak to both of them?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Speak to both of them?
Yes, sir. These two bills address the same urban renewal plan. The first one is for a very small amendment, and the second is for an outright repeal of the urban renewal plan. My hope is to hear both of these and plant, for both of these to be heard in Planning Commission and shortly thereafter by the committee. Yet to be determined which of these, if the repeal is going to move forward, but depending on community feedback. But the urban renewal plan in Hamilton is the only one I know of in the city that has outright prohibited secondhand goods sales, so I can't have a thrift store or consignment shop open in the Hamilton Business District, and people have wanted to have this repealed for a long time, and there was recently a business that wanted to come to the area that couldn't or commit to signing a lease because of that, because used goods sales as a part of their model, and that seemed like as good a time as any to put this in for the repeal of that particular prohibition in it. But as we have passed a comprehensive zoning rewrite, it may be time just to outright repeal the urban renewal plan. We'll see what happens. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to three of the agenda. Before we move to resolutions, I'd like to welcome Kiefer Mitchell back home to City Council, Special Assistant to Governor Hogan. Can you please stand so they can see you? Welcome back, Kiefer. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one three zero R Police Department Forfeiture Funds. For the purpose of requesting that police department representatives and the director of finance appear before the city council to provide information on the use of forfeiture funds by the police department over the past five years, sponsors Stokes, President Young, Henry, Dorsey, Costello, Cohen, Bullock, Burnett, Sneed, Middleton, Clark, Reisinger.
Please note that Councilman Pinkett and Councilman Scott as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. About a year ago, I introduced a resolution about police seize forfeiture, and we recessed after that, and I want to come back and give them an update on the council about the money, where they spending it, how they spending it, and why it's not going back to the communities for safety programs or help after-school programs here in Baltimore City.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee. Maybe we get some cameras in some of the neighborhoods that need it when they say they don't have the funds to do that. Maybe we can use some of the forfeiture funds to put cameras in some of these communities that have high crime.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one three one R Request for State Action Support a fifteen-dollar minimum wage for Maryland. For the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to pass and the governor to sign legislation establishing a statewide fifteen-dollar minimum wage, ensuring that all working Marylanders can pay for their basic needs, sponsors Clark, President Young, Henry, Dorsey, Costello, Bullock, Cohen, Stokes, Burnett, Sneed, Middleton, Reisinger.
Please note Councilman Pinkett and Councilman Scott as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. What goes around comes around, but not forever. Here comes the General Assembly with a bright new class of young legislators who may make the difference the way our newcomers no longer have made such a positive difference in the Baltimore City Council. We hope so, but from my perspective, this is the last go-round where the state has a chance to do our job for us, and so I'm hoping they do it well and that we can help all the sponsors and advocates there to fine-tune and get the votes and bring it home to the state of Maryland. But if that doesn't work out, if it's not going to happen in that election year or that new class year, it's not going to happen, except back home where we live, and I think the city of Baltimore needs to help out of the state, but be prepared to work to bring decent income home to Baltimore City where it can make the difference for thousands of workers right here who live and work here in this city. Time's up. Let's do it at the state or bring it home right away and do it, raise it up in Baltimore City. Fifteen dollars, the sooner the better, while it still means something. I'd like to move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption, if I may.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Chair, the rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, move adoption of this resolution and its immediate flight to the General Assembly. I need a second.
Second by Councilwoman Sneed. All those in favor of adopting Resolution nineteen dash oh one three one R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. This resolution is adopted, and as Councilwoman Clark have stated, this bill is down in Indianapolis, and they're going to need all of us to come down there to rally our legislators from the city and try to make sure that we talk to our friends from around the state, other council members from around the state, and have them to talk to their delegations as well, because I think fifteen dollars by, what is it, twenty twenty-three? Councilwoman Clark?
I think twenty-three on this bill.
So I think it's the right thing to do so that we can move forward, so people can have, you know, a livable wage. Even though fifteen dollars for a family is not really a lot of money, I'm in full support of lobbying the state to make this a statewide bill so that we can get this thing done. So again, Councilwoman Clark, thank you for your leadership on this issue. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Move got Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Henry. It came from everybody over there. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, and this calendar is approved. We now move the bills on second reader, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA eighteen dash zero two one eight Cynthia Paul Vier Truitt, member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission, District Five.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on January the twenty-third, twenty nineteen. I move the nomination favorable.
Okay. Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA nineteen dash zero two two three Wendy L. Blair, member Inclusionary Housing Board, District Fourteen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes. Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA nineteen dash zero two two four Denise DeLever, member Inclusionary Housing Board, District Seven.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA nineteen dash zero two two five Arlene B. Fisher, member Inclusionary Housing Board, District Nine.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA nineteen dash zero two two six Melvin L. Freeman, member Inclusionary Housing Board, District Three.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA nineteen dash zero two two seven Talora Ames Thomas, member Inclusionary Housing Board, District Seven.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA nineteen dash zero two two eight Michael G. Middleton Senior, member Inclusionary Housing Board, District Five.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of confirming this nomination, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move appropriate rules to read short titles for the rest of the meeting.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of doing short titles for the remainder of the hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Short titles. Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three one six Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Information and Technology, five million two hundred seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee held a hearing on this. I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Council Vice President Middleton. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two nine nine Res zoning twenty-five oh one through twenty-five thirteen, twenty-five fifteen, and twenty-five twenty-five West Franklin Street and three thirty North Warwick Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three zero zero Res zoning sixteen hundred West Forty-first Street and Block thirty-five seventy-five C lot three seven four.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Move the bill, I move, move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three zero one Res zoning sixty-four thirty-five Pulaski Highway.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, these, this bill has amendments to my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two nine seven Prevailing Wages Tax Increment Financing Projects.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The sponsor of this bill was Councilman Henry and also Councilman Pinkett. The committee heard this bill on January seventeenth, twenty nineteen, and it was basically about extending the prevailing wage requirements to all TIF projects exceeding a certain amount. The committee approved this bill as favorable as amended. The amendment is on council members' desk. I move the committee amendment.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The bill is amended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President, Council Vice President Middleton.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three zero nine Sale of Property, seven thirty-two West Lexington Street.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The sponsor of this bill was President Young on behalf of the administration. The committee heard this bill on January seventeenth, twenty nineteen. The property is being purchased by the Archdiocese of Baltimore for the construction of a new Catholic school. The committee approved this bill as favorable. I move the bill with a favorable report.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two eight one City Streets Closing a Portion of South Washington Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two eight two City Streets Opening a ten-foot alley bounded by North Howard Street, West Twenty-fourth Street, May Street, and West Twenty-third Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two eight three City Streets Closing a ten-foot alley bounded by North Howard Street, West Twenty-fourth Street, May Street, and West Twenty-third Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two nine zero Zoning Conditioned Use Residential Care Facility Variances twelve oh eight, twelve ten through twelve twenty-two, and twelve twenty-four through twelve twenty-six East Baltimore Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements on this side. Committee announcements. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Biennial Audits Commission, Biennial Audits Oversight Commission will hold a hearing on Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, at five P.M. in chambers. It will be televised on cable TV channel twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Executive Appointments Committee will be holding a hearing on Tuesday, February fifth, twenty nineteen, beginning at five P.M. to review the final nominations for the Baltimore City Youth Commission. Ariel Taylor, Ayana Thomas, Ayana Williams. Also, the Executive Appointments Committee will be holding a hearing on February, Wednesday, February the sixth, at ten A.M. for Employees and Electric Officials Retirement System Board of Trustees, the Honorable Joan Carter Conway. For the Baltimore City Department of Planning, David Ryder. For the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals is Frank Bonaventure Junior, Anisha J. Bonner, Melissa Montez, and Mashala Middleton.
Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be holding a work and voting session on City Council Bill eighteen zero three zero eight Community Relations, Housing Discrimination Source of Income on Tuesday, February twelfth, twenty nineteen, at three thirty P.M. in council chambers. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Regular announcements. Want to say happy birthday to Larry Green. Where's Larry? Today is Larry Green's birthday. We want to ask the city council choir to sing happy birthday. Just kidding. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. Oh, before you go, Councilman Scott, Madam Vice President, I want you to have a moment of silence for Mr. Gary Brown Senior, the father of Gary Brown Junior, who works in the mayor's office. Also like a moment of silence for Reginald Epps, a former employee of the Department of Housing, Cedric R. Cunningham, and Irvin Hall. You got those? of Housing, uh, Cedric R. Cunningham and Irvin Hall. You have those? Okay. Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for the now twenty-six victims of homicides that we've lost in the city of Baltimore this year, along with those that we continue to lose to the opioid crisis. And then also, as a reminder that on Wednesday, February the sixth at five oh one, immediately following the budget committee's hearing at five o'clock, uh, the City Council Public Safety Committee will hold its monthly council stat meeting with the police department. We will discuss, uh, so far, which is a eight percent increase in homicides and a sixty-four percent increase in non-fatal shootings versus last year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Dorsey?
I haven't made any, thank you, Mr. Council President. I don't think I've made too many arts announcements lately. And, uh, I just want to say I've been thinking a whole lot about the Baltimore Symphony Orchestra. Um, I went to a great concert there, uh, a couple weeks ago, a piece by composer, twenty-first cen- twentieth century composer Olivier Messien, a piece called, uh, Tarangalela Symphony. This is the kind of work that as a performer, as a concert goer, as an organization, you maybe are lucky if you get one shot in your life to see it or perform in it. Um, it's a truly, uh, incredible work that small regional symphonies don't do. It's something that you must have a first-class, world-class orchestra to do. Uh, anything less is incapable even of attracting the kind of soloist, a tal- uh, soloist talent that, uh, is required to, uh, guest perform certain parts of it. Um, in a couple of weeks, uh, actually, I think this coming weekend, I'll be going to another BSO concert, um, to see a percussion concerto. It'll be the United States premiere of a work that, uh, drew rave reviews in its wor- at its world premiere in the UK, uh, not too long ago. Again, this is the kind of thing that, um, regional symphonies don't do. Only world-class orchestras do. And right now, uh, our Baltimore Symphony is under, uh, it, it's under threat. Um, the orchestra now plays without a contract. Uh, it has not been renewed. The management and directorship of the orchestra, um, has, uh, now moved to cut the season uh, by, uh, five, by, um, by a fifth, um, making it harder for the players in that orchestra to maintain it as a full-time job, as something that can sustain them as part of a thriving arts and cultural community. And, um, this will ultimately, uh, threaten the level of talent that we're able to have, uh, to attract and retain here as a, as an orchestra in Baltimore. And, uh, that will ultimately downgrade us from a world-class symphony to a nice regional symphony. Um, and, and that's something that I think is, uh, a blow to arts and culture here in Baltimore that we cannot sustain. Um, uh, Baltimore has a long and rich and largely unknown history around music. Uh, it, most people in this room, I'm sure, most people in this city don't know that Baltimore City, uh, in its earliest years and, uh, long ago, had a Department of Music. The director of the Department of Rec and Parks in the city is tasked with providing musical experiences to people in Baltimore City every year. Uh, we used to have two bands in addition to the BSO. BSO is what it is, but we had two bands. They were tasked with providing musical experiences to residents in neighborhoods around Baltimore City all summer long. We had the, the Baltimore, uh, Municipal Concert Band. We also had the Baltimore Band that was more of a jazz band and their separation really out, was an outgrowth of segregation when there was a white band and a black band that played in white neighborhoods and black neighborhoods. There's a long, long history of supporting music here in Baltimore City. And, um, you know, that goes all the way back to the Baltimore Symphony Orchestra bearing the unique distinction of being the only major symphony in the United States that was originally sta- established as a governmental entity. We cannot afford to allow that orchestra to fail. Um, it is too important to our history and it's something that we should be doubling down on, uh, and doing everything that we can. So I just encourage everybody to, um, think about the last time they went and had that kind of experience. And if you don't know how life-changing it is to sit through concerts for an hour or two and just, uh, experience something that you just can't experience unless your body is in that seat. Um, think about getting a ticket and, and going out and having that experience and taking somebody along with you and sharing that experience. Um, it really is transformative and life-changing and it's, it opens you up to the capacity to enjoy and appreciate something you otherwise wouldn't even know you had the capacity to enjoy and appreciate. So, thank you so much for allowing me to say these words, Mr. Council President. And thank you, Mr. Jose Achu, for being a steadfast supporter of the Baltimore Symphony Orchestra.
Chair recognized, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, tonight is the second night of our biannual Homeless Point in Time or PIT count. Uh, will be starting at six thirty PM, uh, this evening at our daily bread. I would encourage anyone who's interested in getting a better understanding of some of the challenges facing, uh, the city as well as, uh, those individuals who are currently experiencing homelessness, uh, to please join us. Uh, this PIT count is extremely important. Uh, we depend on a lot of our federal dollars, uh, to deal with homeless services, uh, based on the results of this census count. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognized, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we do the moment of silence, I'd just like to announce as, uh, the first Vice President of the Maryland Association of Counties, I will be testifying tomorrow, uh, before the House Ways and Means Committee, um, uh, talking about and explaining our twenty-nineteen legislative priorities and will be, I will be emphasizing, uh, the importance of public health funding, particularly with the opioid problems that we are having, um, around the state and particularly giving examples from, uh, the need of help in Baltimore City.
Um, before you go any further, um, I failed to mention to congratulate, uh, Councilman Scott on his appointment for the National League of Cities and for your appointments that you have through NABCO, the National Association of County Officials and also the National, um, Association of Black Legislators throughout the country. So I just wanted to make sure our colleagues know that we have two members that are moving up in rank in these various organizations.
Thank you, Mr. President. And on that note, um, the next, uh, meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, February fourth, twenty-nineteen at five PM. And may we have a moment of silence for Mr. Gary Brown Senior, Reginald Epps, Cedric R. Cunningham, Irvin Hall, and the families of the twenty-six victims of homicide and also our continued, um, the families that continue to struggle, struggle with this opioid epidemic.
Thank you. There be no further business. This meeting will conclude. Good night.